Chairman Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Seay.
Here.
Commissioner Putnam.
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Thank you. Absent today, we have Commissioner Kennedy.
And for the consent calendar, we have the minutes. Discussion or motion? I'd make a motion to approve.
I second it.
So just moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none? Call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Right, motion passed.
Approval of resolutions, anybody would...
And before you do that, I just wanted to make note, the resolutions were noticed in the agenda and in the packet, however, they were omitted from the packet, so those were provided under separate cover. They are now on online as well. We already discussed it with the city attorney's office, and everything's okay to move forward with those.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion for one or both resolutions?
I'll make a motion for both.
For both, 2121 and 2122. Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, motion approved.
Okay, we'll go for the first item on general business, but I live too close, so I had to remove myself, and I'll be back right when it's done. Vice Chair? Okay, Rosio?
Item number one is requesting for a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without tableboards in a unit within a duplex for periods of thirty consecutive days duration at 316 Marilla Avenue, Upper Unit. The owner and applicant is Bonnie Viti. And the representative is in the audience. The unit is a two-story structure that contains four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. The property is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan, which is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. The property manager is listed as Catalina Island Vacation Rental. The contact information is included within the staff report. The transient rental housing impact statement submitted by the applicant declares that the property has been used as a vacation home by the owner. Avalon Municipal Code Section 3/1, 310E5, provides that the planning commission shall consider whether granting the transient rental license shall result in any year-round residence located adjacent to the property, transient rentals having more than a majority of the adjacent residents permitted or licensed for transient rental use. Upon analysis, the saturation map indicates that upon approval of the transient rental license, no oversaturation will occur. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State SEQA Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in change in land use or density. The project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9/8102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. City has received one letter in opposition of the transient rental license this afternoon. Commissioners, you have that letter in front of you. Staff's recommendation is to find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State SEQA Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, adopt the findings necessary to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, accept the findings necessary to approve the transient rental license, and find the application is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Do the commissioners have any questions of Rosio before we proceed to a public hearing? We will open the public hearing. Anybody who should speak on this matter? For against?
Hello?
Hi.
Please state your name and your address, if you would.
I'm so sorry, can't hear very well.
Please state your name and your address, if you would.
My name is Bonnie Viti, and I own the property at 316 Marilla Avenue here in Avalon.
Do we have any questions of her? You want to tell us what you'd like to say?
I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry.
You were asking, do you have any comments that you would wish to address at this time?
Oh, yes, I also reside in Los Angeles. I've lived in Los Angeles most of my life with my family, and we love Catalina, and we were so very happy to purchase a lovely vacation home here. And we just think that it would be criminal to leave such a nice place empty so much of the year, when it could be available for other people to enjoy as well.
Do any commissioners have any question of the applicant?
I have no question. Vice Chair, this is Isaac Rosen. I just wanted to check in while the public hearing's open. I know Rosio mentioned there had been one letter received in opposition. My recommendation, if it's not within the agenda packets, and I haven't seen it, is to at least summarize on the record during the public hearing what that opposition letter says.
Rosio, do you want to address that?
Sure, I can just read the letter. Yes. Dear Planning Commission, I recently received notification regarding the application for a transient rental license and a coastal development permit for the property located at 316 Marilla Avenue, Upper Unit. I would like to protest the approval for this license permit for the following reasons. One, right now there is a housing shortage for full-time residents in Avalon due to multiple properties being short-term vacation rentals. By adding another property to the list of short-term rentals, the availability of a long-term rental for local residents will further dismiss. Two, Marilla Avenue is presently a relatively quiet street, and I am not sure if there are any licensed short-term rental permits on the portion of the street. Adding a short-term rental on the street could potentially seize a noise nuisance that would be appreciated by the residents on the street, none of which are elderly. Presently, my property at 309 Marilla Avenue is multi-unit, with the bottom unit rented out full-time, and my adult children live in the upper unit full-time. I am a part-time resident, and turning my property into a short-term rental would financially benefit me. However, Upper Marilla is a pleased and quiet street to live on, and I feel adding a short-term rental to the street would negatively affect the neighborhood that would be here. I haven't spoken to my neighbors regarding this issue, but past conversations lead to me believing that the bulk of them feel the same as I do. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Harley J. Reinhardt.
So Thomas Salinas, 212 Catalina. I just wanted to say that although we do understand and respect the neighborhood, the fact that it's not under saturation shouldn't really deprive, you know, the applicant's family's capacity to rent out or do vacation rentals. It's actually primarily the purchase is intended to be a family respite. But in the meantime, as the applicant has mentioned, they would like to allow other people to enjoy the beauty of our city, and our town, and our island, and the intent there is certainly quite appreciated. And I think that pretty much the neighborhood is still going to stay, the quiet Upper Marilla that it always has been.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
And I did receive one comment via electronic, if you'd like me to read that.
Sure.
This is just a general, it says, "Dear Mr. Michael Palmer, I'm writing to express to you my concerns regarding the increase of the transient rental licenses that is being put forth to the commission this evening. I currently live two doors down from one of them, and the experience has been quite negative. The visitors are often loud at late hours, create an abundance of trash, and have little regard for the residential neighborhood they're staying in. More transient rentals will worsen this problem. Another major concern is the lack of housing this creates for year-round residents. It also increases the rents for the year-round housing that's available, making it very challenging to live here. I've noticed businesses not being fully operational due to the lack of employees. I realize there are multiple factors contributing to this, but our housing shortage is a big part of the problem. It'll only get worse if we continue to increase the number of transient rentals and don't apply more regulations on this practice. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Sharon Melandra, 365 East Whitley, Avalon, California."
Sure. I was just asked to address that this property has actually never been a long-term residential property, not in the last several years, so we're not taking away from that market. I'm sorry, the applicant is not taking away from that market. And, you know, with every fiber of our interest in vacation rentals, we do not rent to party people, we do not rent to bachelorette parties, we do not over-occupy the unit, and everything seems to be pretty well-done, and we have local representation that will take care of and address any issues should they come up. And with the ability to remove someone from a property if they're not paying attention to the rules and the respect and showing respect to their neighbors, I think that the property will be not a disruption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that my family has been using this home as a vacation home for a year. We want to add to Catalina. We have done a lot to upgrade the house and beautify the area, and we would only want to have people staying there who would respect the area and maintain the home in a proper condition. We're not eager to have such a lovely place that we've put so much into get trashed by a disreputable crowd, by a party crowd. But as I said, we are not here all of the time, and I know that there is such a shortage of space available for visitors, as well as long-term renters. It just made sense to me that we should make it available to others when we're not here.
This is the residence you use when you're on the island?
Yes.
So if it doesn't get a CUP, you're not putting it into the year-round?
I'm so sorry.
If it does not get a CUP today, you are not putting it in the year-round market anyhow?
No. No, it would not be put, it would not be made available as a rental property, because then we wouldn't be able to use it.
Gotcha. Any other questions of the applicant? Anybody else here wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion amongst the commissioners?
Sandy? No. As I really appreciate the letters that came in, and I hear the concerns of no long-term housing for Avalon. It's been a problem for decades. I feel that as we get CUPs in front of us on a monthly, that as you asked the question, would it become a long-term rental if we didn't approve it, 100% of the applicants say no. And with that said, they wouldn't make it a year-round housing, unfortunately, and then we would lose city revenue as well. So this is such a catch-22, and I mean, I've always said that the city needs to create housing for our year-round housing, and it's something that we need to work on together and collectively as a city and a community. It's really hard, it's a hard decision, because there are no employees and there is no housing, but it's hard to put that, all the fault on property owners. So, I mean, the application satisfies the municipal code. I mean, everything here, it's not saturated. Up on Marilla, they have a reputable vacation rental company that's going to be managing it, and I also would like to say that, please, if you have issues with vacation rental and people making noise and causing disturbance, please come to the city and file a written report so that it can go on record. We do have a recourse to follow-up, and they can be in violation of their permit, and it can be taken away. So please, we hear that people are upset about the noise and the disturbance, which I get it too, where I live. But if you do not file a complaint and put it on record, we can't do anything about it. So there are ways to get it revoked, if it needs to be revoked, and to mitigate these issues. But just by saying that they're a problem, and you hear it, and it's disturbing, but you don't follow through with a written complaint that goes on record, we, our hands are tied.
I think the other thing is, if we have a complaint, to address it to the property management company.
As well.
Because that's what they're there for. That's why there's someone on 24-hour-a-day call. Address it to them and see if you get a response. If you don't get a response, go down and file a complaint. If they come and respond and stop the problem, it would seem to me that's good.
I mean, I get that, I get where you're coming from, but then that's, but if it's a continued problem, then with the same property, then it's important to, I mean, it's important to give the vacation rental company a chance to make it right and handle the situation. That's what they're there for. But if that property seems to be a continued issue, then
Definitely.
Please, come to the city to make sure you file a written complaint.
Did you have any filed around there, Rosio, that you saw?
I'm sorry?
Was there any complaints filed around that property, I mean, any of these properties right there on Marilla recently that you know of?
No, we don't have many transient rental licenses started within that street.
Any other comment? And we want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the transient rental license.
We get a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Want to call for a vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Acting Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion approved, thank you.
Rosio? Rosio?
Yes?
I don't have an agenda.
Okay, let me go.
Do you have an extra?
I need the whole packet or...
No, I just need the agenda, for some reason I don't have it.
Two.
I didn't take a nap.
I missed something.
Item two, Rosio, please.
Item number two is a request for a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without tableboards in a dwelling unit for fewer than thirty consecutive days duration at 346 Sumner Avenue. The owner and applicant is Ed Moon Pollock. Applicant is present in the audience. The property is located within the high-density residential. Property is a single-family residence that contains two bedrooms and one bathroom. The property is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan, which is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. The property manager for the unit is listed as Catalina Island Vacation Rental. The contact information is included within the staff report. The transient rental housing impact statement submitted by the applicant declares that the property has been used as a vacation rental by the owners. Avalon Municipal Code Section 3/1, 310E5, provides that the planning commission shall consider whether granting the transient rental license shall result in any year-round residence located adjacent to the proposed transient rental, having more than a majority of adjacent residents permitted or licensed for transient rental use. Upon analysis, the saturation map indicates that the property is located on a street in which approximately 50% of the properties are actively operating as transient rentals. The planning commission may consider this in deciding whether to approve the transient rental license. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State SEQA Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in change in land or use or density. The project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9/8.102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. City have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transient rental license. Staff recommendation to the planning commission is to find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State SEQA Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitation, adopt the findings necessary to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, accept the findings necessary to approve the transient rental license, find the application is allowed under the 2021 growth policy. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Before we open the public hearing, any questions for staff? Okay, open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to testify for or against, please come to the podium and give us your name and address? Okay, close the public hearing. Any motions?
Any? Anything come in?
I have no public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Motion to approve, and seconded, any discussion?
I just have a problem with how much is already on that street. I can't even judge it, it's over 50%.
Is there any municipal code that says a percentage of, like, is it in the...
Yeah, we can clarify with staff, but I think it says we can consider that.
You can consider that, but there's no cap. Wee.
No. I mean, it's just, once it gets to that point, things change a little, but that's...
Right, it's up for the planning commission to determine how much they want to weigh saturation into the decision-making process. Previously, the planning commission has given the guidance of approximately 50%, and it's right there at the 50%. Rather than make a recommendation from staff, we thought it would be easier to leave that open so that a planning commission could discuss how they would want to weigh that into the recommendation on whether to approve it or deny it.
When I'm looking at this one, there's two vacation rentals, a duplex next door, and one on the other side of it. So this is one that's in between two vacation rentals.
And no permanent housing.
To deny them a permit when they're surrounded by it, it doesn't seem right to me, that you get here late and you have different rights than people that are all here. Just because you got here in 2021 or whatever, as opposed to 1956, you can't get the same rights as another property owner. Kind of doesn't sit right to me, especially when I see this one surrounded by two vacation rentals as well, and they're asking for the same thing. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's call for a vote.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Motion carried.
Motion carried.
Now, item number three, please.
Item number three is a request for a conditional use permit, site plant, and coastal development permit to renovate an existing vacant commercial space into a fresh squeezed lemonade, roasted nuts, and shaved ice business, Totally Nuts Company, located at 114 Catalina Avenue. The owner of the property is Cesar Octavio Loera, and applicant is Shane Bernard. The applicant is present in the audience. This property is located within the commercial zone. The project is in the floodplain area, as defined by our floodplain map, 06037C22047, Zone AE, a special floodzone area. The value of improvements do not exceed 50% of the market value of the structure. Structures that exceed 50% of the market value of the structure before the start of improvements trigger a classification of substantial improvement, subjecting the structure to addition of floodplain development standards. The project is categorically exempt under Section 15301D-E2AB of the State SEQA Guidelines, existing facilities which state the following. 15301D, restoration or rehabilitation of the deterioration of damaged structures, facilities, or mechanical equipment to meet current standards of public health and safety, unless it is determined that the damage was substantial and resulted from an environmental hazard such as earthquakes, landslide, or flood. 15301E, addition to existing structures, providing that the addition will not result in increase or more than 10,000 square feet. The project is in an area where all public services and facilities are available to allow for maximum development permissible in the general plan, and in an area which the project is located is, I'm sorry, the area in which the project is not located is not environmentally sensitive. As proposed, the project is in allowed use in the commercial zone and complies with all applicable development standards, subject the conditional use permit is allowed for the conversion use on this project site. The site is suitable for the proposed use and contemplated conventions, and the use is consistent with the existing and intended land use of the commercial zone, as set forth in the general plan. Including providing services to allow all type of visitors and maintaining a sense of place that it is part of the appeal for visitors and residents. Pedestrians and vehicle traffic associated with this project is not anticipated to change. The design of the proposed remodel is suitable for the commercial structure. The project's description is to convert an existing vacant commercial space for the use of a fresh squeezed lemonade, roasted nuts, and shaved ice business. City staff have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the conditional use permit, site plant, and coastal development permit to renovate an existing vacant space into a commercial business. Staff's recommendation to the planning commission is to find the project categorically exempt under Section 15301D and E2AB, existing facilities, adopt the findings necessary to... Adopt the findings necessary to support a coastal development permit pursuant to Avalon Municipal Code, Section nine slash eight one zero three. Accept the findings to support approval of a conditional use permit. Approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, any questions for staff?
So this is, it's the one next to the liquor store.
Yes.
Between. Between.
Correct.
So it's part of the liquor store area, and so this was a clothing store, now, no, this was the?
I think it was the old Silver Seas tour location. They relocated, and it's now the vacant spot.
Okay.
Did you have a question? This would be a good time to bring up about water.
So there is existing water?
There is, that's correct.
Perfect. I figured since it was part of the, I think it was like one, right, the liquor store at one, yeah, so there was always water on it. Okay. I just have to put that on record so people.
Any other questions? Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf or against the project, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Shane Bernard. I live at two zero seven Fairview Avenue in Manitou Springs, Colorado, eight zero eight two nine.
Okay. And what would you like to say about this project?
So we came here a little over a month ago on vacation, and we've always thought that having a little seaside location would be perfect, and we just happened to walk by a for rent sign, and here we are. So, yeah, it's been, it's been kind of a crazy ride. Like, people have been saying, it's been very difficult to find housing, but we've got kind of a handshake agreement upon your approval with both a townhome to live in and a place to sell shaved ice. So upon your approval, yeah, we can sign some documents and.
You currently run one of these businesses now?
I'm sorry?
You run one of these businesses in Colorado now?
We've got two locations in Colorado, yes.
That's what I assumed. I saw the pictures and that, like, you're already.
Yeah, we've been in business for twelve years now.
I think it's great with COVID, we lost a few businesses, so to see someone show up from out of town and say they want to invest in our town, I think is a positive thing for sure.
Yeah. And, you know, for the month we've been here, we've just really gotten involved with the people here and just love the community, so.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have no comments.
No comments, and nothing came in at the last minute? Okay. Close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to make a motion?
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah.
There's water that's on the harbor, yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
My second.
And I'm assuming that's with the recommendations from staff, one, two, four?
Staff recommendations, one, two, four.
My second.
Okay. So we've got a motion to approve, and it's second. Any discussion?
Let's hope it hurries up before the heat.
When do you plan to open? Can we ask that?
As soon as possible. We haven't, we haven't been able to move forward without your approval, so as.
Tomorrow we shall start.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote, please, Rosia.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, please.
Sure. Item number four is an application for a public hearing for an applica, for a site plan, setback variance, and coastal development permit to convert an existing one-story, two-bedroom, one-bathroom, single-family residence into a two-story property with the same number of bedrooms. They are proposing to add two bathrooms and add a second floor and rooftop decks along with an autoet parking space at three eighteen Eucalyptus Avenue. The owner is Robert and Go Gabriel. The applicant is Fine Line Construction. This property is located in the high-density residential zone in the residential flats area. In terms of the site plan, as mentioned before, the property currently exists as a four hundred and forty-four-square-foot, one-story, two-bedroom, one-bathroom structure, and they are proposing to construct a two-story property with the same number of bedrooms. One of these bedrooms will be located on the first floor, and two bathrooms will be located on the second floor, so one bathroom for each bedroom. The first floor of the unit will be approximately five hundred and forty square feet, and the second floor is approximately five hundred and ninety square feet. The project will add a sixty-square-foot off-street autoet parking spot in the northeast side of the lot abutting the alley, and is proposing to construct a ninety-six-square-foot second-floor deck and a three hundred and twenty-five-square-foot roof deck. The building height is proposed at twenty-seven feet eight inches. This is below the permitted height, which is twenty-eight inches. The proposed decks meet the development standard requirements in the high-density residential zone for the residential flat area. This application also includes a variance request. This is for the rear setback. They are proposing to reduce the setback to a zero-foot setback. Under the municipal code, the minimum required setbacks are actually three feet. For lots in the flat area, they do allow, or their code does allow, a zero side yard setback, provided that one side stays three feet, and then there are certain conditions to be met. This is not the case for this one. This variance is actually for the rear setback. The rear setback is being requested by the applicant, and the applicant states that other properties in the area have been previously allowed to develop with a rear setback over many years. In reviewing this proposal and looking at the code, I just want to make note that there has been an error on the application form and a misinterpretation from this. So the, the code actually requires a three-foot setback, not a zero-foot setback on the rear. The municipal code also permits the planning commission to grant variances with some very specific conditions, and these conditions are deemed necessary to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. In terms of variances, the zoning ordinance says that they should only be granted when the zoning ordinance denies the property whose unique character, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings deprive it of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classifications. So they're supposed to be used to accommodate the unique topography, or you have an odd-shaped lot. This is not the case with this application. The property does not really meet the terms for the variance as such. Staff's recommending denying the zero-foot, the zero-foot rear setback. Previous projects that were erroneously allowed to be developed without a variance for a zero rear or front setback does not really create any additional vested rights, and all variance applications should be and must be considered on a case-by-case basis. In terms of CEQA, the project is categorically exempt under Section fifteen three oh one D and E two A B of the state CEQA guidelines. This is for the existing facilities. It's also further described in the staff report. The project also requires a coastal development permit under Section nine dash eight point one oh two B two V of the municipal code, and the project is within the three hundred-foot appealable zone, and the proposed change in use conforms to all certified local coastal plan and complies with all requirements. This project also does not create any additional living or transient rentals, and as such, confirmation of a water allocation is not applicable. That said, a letter from Southern California Edison dated June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one was received by the city stating that the remodel would not increase occupancy and thus would not require any additional water. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission make four findings. The first one is to approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions. The second one is deny the findings as sufficient to approve the rear setback variance following staff's recommendation. Third is find the project categorically exempt under CEQA Section fifteen three oh one D and E two A B for existing facilities, and then adopt the findings and approval of the coastal development permit and make the determination that the project, I'm sorry, is not within the three hundred-foot appealable zone. I misstated that in the report. It's my apologies. So with that, that concludes my report, and I believe the applicant may be in the audience here as well and can be available for comment, so, thank you.
Okay. Before we open the hearing, questions for staff?
Actually, I've got one. The properties there, more than half do enjoy zero-foot setback to the backyard.
That is correct. Those were granted either previously or were existing long before the code was stipulated. The ones that were newer projects that were granted that were granted without a variance.
And that was because?
That was because the previous staff and application were erroneous in their application of the code.
So the codes always existed?
The code's always existed. It's always stated that there's three-foot setbacks. The only, the only caveat is for, in the residential flats, a zero side yard setback is allowed under certain conditions, provided that the opposite side has a three-foot side yard setback, and, and that they meet a couple of conditions, including recording a document with the county, which, which is also a part of that.
Okay, what was the criteria?
What was the what?
The, could you repeat the criteria for?
To grant the variance?
To grant the variance in the uniqueness of the?
I couldn't hear that. The criteria for the which?
The discussion about the uniqueness of the lot.
The hardship.
Oh. So the criteria is actually in the staff report too, but what it states is that the properties that have a unique character, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, deprive it of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classifications.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We're open the public hearing. Open the hearing. Anybody wishing to testify for or against?
Hi, I'm the actual designer. I'm Tori Jones.
Okay, yeah, name and address first, please.
Address two seven one one Oak Mill Drive, Los Alamitos, California, nine zero seven two zero.
Thank you.
I work with Fine Line Construction, and I have for approximately fifteen years. I'm the majority designer for all of their projects, and this is the first time that we have encountered having to do the variance. All of the, when I first started, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, it wasn't clear as far as the zoning code went to what the rear yard and the front yard setbacks is. In the zoning code, it states that you can have the three-foot side yard, the one-foot side yard, and it doesn't say anything about a zero front yard or rear yard with it abutting an alley. If it doesn't abut an alley, in the flats area, if it doesn't abut an alley, it does specifically state a three-foot rear yard setback. We've been doing this for, me for fifteen years, Pete at Fine Line for close to thirty, all with a zero front yard, a zero rear yard. I went back and looked at the ordinances from ninety-seven, which is the original ordinances for the flats, and it did state a three-foot rear yard setback on an alley and a zero-foot rear yard setback if you don't have an alley, which didn't quite make sense. But, and then in ninety-nine, it changed to a three-foot rear yard setback if you don't have an alley, and there was no specific rear yard setback for an alley, where that's coming to Mike's point of going back to the standard high-density zone, which does state you have three-foot setbacks on all sides. So based on that, there's no clear language, I guess, that all of the developmental standards forms that we fill out, say zero yard, rear yard, it's either zero or three. The three has always been if you don't have an alley, and the zero. So there is definitely lack of language, and my client now is taking the brunt of being able to or not to have the setback that everybody else has had forever. I understand, you know, where Mike is coming from, because he's reading the language that is in the code. We've had, in two thousand and twenty, I've had three or four projects approved through the planning commission, through the city, with a zero rear yard setback and a zero front yard setback. Usually, we keep it not zero, it's usually six to a foot in the rear yard, but based on that zero yard setback. I could go back to two thousand and thirteen and give you all the addresses that I've done. So I think whether, hopefully, we'll get the variance, if that's what it's going to require to keep the project moving forward and how we have it, but this is going to be an issue for everybody in the flats from here on out. So does the language get specific to what, you know, what the actual setbacks are for the front and the rear? If we do have to have that three-foot setback, those properties in the flats are so small already that I think it's going to deter a lot of people from rebuilding and creating new. You know, there's a lot, still a lot of old nineteen twenties little shacks that are in town that people are improving on, and this will just make it a little more difficult to build.
I have a question for staff.
Oh, wait.
No, I know.
Okay, thank you. I think, yeah, you made your point very clear. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against?
Perfect timing.
Name and address, please.
I wasn't going to come here. I had a cancer treatment yesterday and wasn't expected to even stand up, so. To clarify one thing, those of you may be thinking, geez, Pete, you look like hell. I do, and I concur. So, anyway, I don't know what Tori just said, but this, the variance that we're asking for is simply to follow the same line of reasoning as we've been doing for thirty years. Michael found some issues in the, the code, which seemed to cause a little confusion as, as to what got brought forward and what didn't, and I agree, it needs to be resolved, and I do not think it needs to fall on the Gabriel shoulders that after thirty-something years of doing the same thing, that we're all going to just, you know, I think it needs to be discussed and resolved and clarified and rewritten, but I just don't think that it's going to tip the island on its ear. If you look in the alleys, I mean, the stuff we've been doing, the stuff we've been had approved recently is the same. Stuff that's been going on for years and years is, is tight in the alley, so. That's my contention, is that the variance to something that's been happening for thirty years should not be on their shoulders.
So I have a question for you, Pete. So when you're filling out these form, when you're filling out these forms, and you've been filling them out for decades, so you, it was zero?
Well, the same form's been used for as long as I can recall, and it has the development standards.
And you've been in front of us many a times regarding a project pretty much similar to this on Eucalyptus.
Yeah, I mean, we've been doing this for years.
And every time, staff had recommended to approve. So how did this kind of come? I guess I'm asking, how did this kind of come up? Where did the trigger come from, and?
Sure.
Were you already, did you already draw these plans and do all this before?
Well, we, we did it like we do all of them.
Right.
So, and again, he looked into it.
With knowing that it was zero, right?
It's been zero.
Assuming, because that's what you've been doing for years.
We don't always, usually we push it back some because there's gas meters and this and that that has to happen, but, you know, he found something that, that appears to be a valid finding.
Exactly.
I mean, the city attorney's been. I mean, the city attorney's been watching this stuff go on for years and years and never caught it, so he found it, and I agree that it's something that needs to be cleaned up and clarified.
So, how do we?
I just don't think it's shown now.
How do we move forward?
Yeah, that'll be after the public hearing.
So, I can answer that when it's appropriate.
Until after the public hearing.
Sure.
That's all right.
I missed that. I'm kind of deaf at the moment, too, so.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
All right.
I think, yeah, I think you've both made your point.
Thank you.
Crystal clear.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to speak for or against? And did we get any comments to read into the record for or against the?
Yeah.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, and...
Sure, so I can go ahead and answer part of that, and then I'll hand it over to Isaac to see if he wants to add anything. But essentially, once we've discovered this issue, and the code is actually really clear, the code under the high-density residential provides for three-foot setbacks all around, and it has a definition for what those setbacks are. The following section in the high-density residential zone stipulates a geographic area, which is defined colloquially as the flats, and then has another two provisions, one for alleys that abut, and, one for properties that abut an alley, another one for properties that do not abut an alley. But the code reads exactly the same for both of them, so I don't know why they have a distinction for them. And really, what it says there is basically in lieu of a three-foot side yard setback on two sides, that one side can be reduced down to zero if certain conditions are met, and those, when those conditions are not present, then a variance would need to be requested on that. And so, that's kind of where we were. In terms of where the city, how the city can move forward, the first thing what we need to do is we need to obviously change the application forms. We are currently going through the entire code and all of the applications, because we have a couple different applications based off of what zoning codes you're in, and we need to ensure that those accurately reflect the code. I have no clue why those were erroneous or how long they've been erroneous, but we need to do that. The other thing that we need to do is we need to clarify the setback standards, and we'll be undertaking this in a more comprehensive manner, because there's a couple other issues that we found out and that the code either doesn't clarify or provides some ambiguity, and so we need to address some of those. But we're going to do all of that at a future meeting beyond. For how to address some of the other properties that have not, that have not received a setback variance if needed, there's no plans to enforce those previous projects, so we're not going to go be knocked down on people's doors and require them to reapply or enforce that, anything. Now, with that said, in all likelihood, if they were to make modifications to their, to their building that were stanchion in nature, then we would be addressing some of the code deficiencies, and we would probably request either that they apply for a variance at that time, or that they bring their building up to code. And so, with that, Isaac, do you want to add anything to that?
Mike, I think, I think you did a good job summarizing the issue, and I think importantly, obviously, the municipal code trumps the sort of administrative forms, and the city's aware now, and the planning commission has before it a request for a setback variance that's project-specific, and so they can consider, you know, all the factors heard during the public hearing and considering whether they want to approve or deny it. But it is my interpretation that what's written in the code is relatively straightforward, at least as it pertains to setbacks. There is an opportunity always to do more code cleanup, but there is language within, within the municipal code that sort of spells out the requirements in the zone.
Okay, thank you. You know, and I'm thinking that when we take a look at that, we might want to look at the zero setback, since that is the character of the area. I can't, you know, that should be considered also. Part of the reason I'm thinking that is, I would think almost anybody would be eligible for a variance, because all the properties are uniquely small and uniquely tight, and I don't think it would take that much for us to make findings, that this one is also pretty unique. I mean, it's similar to its neighbors and everything, but in a sense, they're all quite small, and it would be a shame to deny one home. You know, it's, I don't think it's our goal to push everybody up three feet over the next 50 to 100 years of redevelopment, which would be a part of our discussion in the zoning change, but in terms of this particular variance request, I think the size and the configuration of that lot is, yeah, suitable for variance if it's the desire of the planning. So, based on that loaded comment, anybody wish to make a motion for, and get a second that we can have further discussion?
I looked at the same thing. A lot of the neighbors have the exact same thing that's already existing there. If you went to a zero-foot setback, is you going to change anything going up and down the alley? No, not unless they're driving on your property. I also looked at the fact that they're putting in a parking space back there, which I think is a great thing. It's off-street parking, it's on their property, and I would have to agree with you. I mean, if we were going to do it, I would say we clean up the application form first and then go from there. But the lots are all like 25 by 45 foot, doesn't give you a lot. If you've got three on each side, you've lost six feet. You've lost another three from the back and three from the front. You're going to do a single-wide trailer. And what exists there right now is a single-wide trailer.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve.
And?
With the variance?
All, all of the, all of the variants. Oh, I'm sorry to step in. Vice Chair, I had a, I had a little bit of a difficult time hearing you, I think just through the digital feed, but I just want to make sure before the motion is on the floor, if, if the direction from the commission is to approve a variance, we just want to make sure for staff's purposes, since they'll bring back the resolution at the next meeting, if that's the direction it was going, and apologies, I was having a hard time hearing. We want to just make clear sort of the conditions for approving the variance in terms of the unique circumstances specific to this project, and then staff can, can work that into a resolution that would come back next month.
So, yours, you're approving one, three, and four, but you're also, condition number two, it says deny, what you're recommending is approval of variance.
I'm recommending approval.
Based on the uniqueness of the size.
The uniqueness of the size of the lot, and the usage of what you've got right around it doing the exact same thing.
Okay. So, is, is there a second?
Yes, there's a second.
So, how about discussion on this? I, I, yeah, I think it qualifies for variance. I think, to me, I look at variance as a sort of a relief valve, that when somebody gets singled out by following the strict interpretation of the ordinance, that you can make an exception. And this is quite a small little lot in a zone, and everybody else has it. I mean, it's without a doubt being treated differently as the code requires, but then, therefore, I think it's eligible for variance.
I agree with what Michael's saying, that he found it.
Yeah, but I also agree that Mike is right on.
But the ones in the past have been done erroneously. They shouldn't have been done, but as you guys are saying, it's not going to affect anything, and it is in line with everything else in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it seems to be putting a hardship on this one lot owner.
And I would say if you look at the houses around there, there's a couple remodeled ones there that are absolutely gorgeous, and they bring up everyone's property value, and they're a definite improvement to the city, and this particular property, with the current existing structure.
Needs it.
Yeah.
Call for vote.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, and right before we get to this next item, I just wanted to say, when we bring back any code cleanup, we'll also bring back consideration of revising the municipal code, because it seemed like there was some interest in there to entertain, looking at potentially revising that for a zero rear and front setback as well. So, we'll take note of that and put that in when we bring that back.
Thank you.
So, item number five, we have two people that will be abstaining due to proximity. Commissioners Smith and Putnam.
I would like to say one thing, that I never got a notice for this, and neither did some of my neighbors, just so you know.
So, good evening, planning commissioners. Item number five is an application for a public hearing for a conditional use permit, site plan, and coastal development permit to construct a new two-story duplex. Unit one will contain three bedrooms, two and a half baths, and a garage. Unit two will contain three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and a garage, and this is, property is located at 151 and 153 Olive Street. The owner for this is Peter and Kathy Savage, and the applicant is Fine Line Construction. The property is located in the high-density zone. In terms of the site plan, the lot of the proposed project is currently vacant. The project proposes to construct a new two-story duplex, as previously mentioned. Unit one, which is mid-level, is approximately 1,664 square feet and will contain three bedrooms and two and a half baths. Unit one will also include a 225-square-foot deck and a 475-square-foot garage. Unit two, which is the upper unit, is approximately 1,716 square feet and contains three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms. Unit two will also have a 162-foot auto wet garage and a 318-foot deck. The project is subject to the municipal code standards of development for lots with a 14-degree average slope or less, as the average slope of this lot is approximately seven-plus degrees. The project and the proposed decks meet the development standards in the high-density residential zone. The project is categorically exempt under section 15303B of the State Secret Guidelines. This is in regards to construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures, as further described in the staff report. In terms of the city's annual growth policy, this project does require a freshwater allocation as it creates additional living and transient rentals. A letter was received from Southern California Edison, originally dated September 19th, 2019, stating that the project was granted a freshwater allocation for the construction of a new duplex of three bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms in each unit and separate addresses. On March 24th, 2021, Edison issued a letter granting an extension of that project expiring on September 19th of 2022. The city will monitor construction to ensure that water allocation continues to remain in effect. The project also requires a coastal development permit under section 9-8102B2V of the municipal code, and the project is within the 300-foot appealable zone, and the proposed change in use conforms to the local coastal plan and complies with all requirements. In terms of recommendations, staff has three recommendations. The first one is to approve the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions identified as Exhibit A in the staff report, find the project categorically exempt under 15303B of the State Secret Guidelines, and adopt the findings and approval of a coastal development permit and make the determination that the project, I'm sorry, is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. I missed both of those up. So, with that, that concludes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we start, or before we open the public hearing? Open the public hearing? Anybody wishing to talk for or against?
Since I'm still here, I don't know that there's, is there any questions or issues or anything about the event?
Any questions from the applicant?
I don't have any. I haven't had a look at it.
We didn't get anything in?
I have no comments.
No comments? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Pete.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to testify for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Any comments or motions?
Only comment I see is, you know, they've got a five-foot setback on the, on the front, three on the two sides, and 24 on the rear, which is basically, I believe, like a driveway up there anyhow. I wondered how much it's going to block the view of the property next door, but if you're on the lot, you're on the lot. I don't think there's any, you know, so, then the next-door neighbor, you know, you really can't say, if you can't build on yours, because I've got mine there.
After two weeks, can I sign me?
I've seen their construction before, but they're not very nice, but they have already put in, and you knew something was going here eventually.
Okay. Any, a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
So, to approve with staff's recommendations 133?
123.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Go seal, please.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Item number six, after everybody gets back.
You have a question?
Yeah, Pete, do you?
Sorry, it may already have been resolved on death. Is it, going back to the zoning or the setback issue, is there going to be some public planning commission hearing as to how all that shakes out, as far as what's really going to be?
We will bring back any discussion as part of a larger code cleanup that we're working on with the city attorney's office. Probably not going to happen for several months. We're going through the entire code, but the short answer is yes.
Okay, it'd just be nice if the public could throw their hat in. Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Pete. Take care.
Yes, feel better.
One note, one note from Isaac, just to reiterate what Mike said, since it would require a zoning code amendment, it would be a public hearing before the planning commission to make a formal recommendation to city council, and then there'd be two public hearings at the council level as well.
Thank you. Item number six, our final item?
Item number six. Item number six is a public hearing to consider a transient rental license, minimum night stay, and penalties associated with unlawful use, and consider adopting a resolution recommending those changes to city council. As many of you know, we have been talking about first transitioning CUPs to transient rental license, and then following that adoption by city council, there's been some discussion about whether to entertain any amendments to the municipal code, one, requiring a minimum number of night stay, and two, requiring the penalties. And so, with that, at the last meeting, there was direction from the planning commission to go ahead and move forward with the proposed ordinance and resolution. If amenable, the proposal for you today is to look at what those proposals are, and if, if you agree with them, to recommend adopting, adopt a resolution recommending an ordinance to the council to adopt those changes. So, with that, what we ended up putting in there as a placeholder, and it's definitely open to planning commission's thoughts. The first one is regarding the minimum number of nights stay. Planning departments recommending a three-night minimum stay per calendar year for transient rentals, but will obviously entertain additional input and comments from the planning commission, should you wish to go with that or omit that requirement altogether. Previously, there was a minimum night for conditional use permits for transient rentals, and that was a minimum of renting it out one night per year in order to keep that CUP active. There is currently no minimum number of nights stay for the transient rentals. The thought process behind there on the original intent was they have to, they have to pay and they have to keep it active, and so they're not at risk, they're at greater risk of losing it if they don't use it, because they're essentially wasting money. In terms of the penalties, the planning department is further recommending amending Article III. This is for the transient rentals within chapters 3-1 of Title III of the municipal code to codify the council's ability to set penalties for unlawful transient rental use via the adopted resolution. Those penalties, as stated, would be for the first offense, it would be a $1,000 fine. For the second offense, it would be- For the second offense, it would be a $2,000 fine. And for third offense or subsequent violations, it would be $3,000. So it would be an escalating fee charge. Right now, we do not have any fee structures in place for illegal transient rentals, and this would have, if passed, would provide a little bit more regulatory teeth to enforce that. We still have mechanisms to enforce it, but this hopefully dissuades people from renting their units out illegally and coming to the City Council for, I mean, the Planning Commission rather, for consideration of a transient rental license. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt that resolution, recommending the council amend Chapter 3-1 of Title III of the Municipal Code with respect to transient rental minimum number of nights stays and penalties, and find the action exempt from SEQUA. So with that, Isaac, do you have anything to add before I turn that back over to the Planning Commission?
Only to say that this was agendized as a public hearing item, so I would, you know, consider asking questions of staff about the proposed recommendations, and just to be sure, we do open it up in case anyone wants to speak on it.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing?
So are we, so the sign for the illegal vacation is, he just went over, and then the minimum would be three nights a month, a TOT tax would be paid, correct?
A year, isn't it?
Three nights per calendar year, correct.
Okay.
How do you, I've got a question. How'd you come up with three? I remember, we were like all over the place on our.
You were all over the place. I wanted to make a recommendation, one to just start the conversation, and felt that under the previous CUP, one seemed to be too little, and three seemed to be kind of a happy medium.
Okay. And did you, when you were thinking about this, did you ever, were you considering zero? And the reason I'm asking is, I know it takes effort.
And administrative.
Yeah, administrative work. So was, is there an advantage for staff to have at least one to three a year?
There's no advantage to staff either way. I mean, we would have, I mean, we would either have to track it, or we wouldn't have to track it. So really, the reason why this was on there in the first place was, under the last meeting, direction from the Planning Commission said, just bring us forth an proposal, so that we could provide additional direction and kind of move this more towards action instead of talking about it. So when looking at it, the original language, we, right now, we don't have a minimum for the transient rental licenses. So rather than not keep it at zero, we just made a recommendation by looking at what other communities have adopted. They're kind of all over the place. Indian Wells is kind of an anomaly. They actually have a very high recommendation, and it's during certain times, and that's because they've got certain major events that are regional draws, and they're trying to find the balance between transient rentals and hotels. And in other communities, it's either zero, all the way up to around seven per calendar year. Some also have caps, where you can have no more than, and then do that as a requirement instead of putting a threshold of a minimum.
Thank you.
So what's the fee right now for the license?
It's approximately $3,200.
$3,200 for the license, so it's kind of a little bit the same as the conditional.
It's exactly the same as the conditional use permit. We're still evaluating that, and we've been remiss in bringing that back, but it is something that we need to address in the next month.
And, I mean, if you take a vacation rental, I'm just averaging between $300 a night and $500 a night, it averages out about $150 to $200 a year for the three nights. And who, yeah, the TOT tax. Who keeps track of, the finance department keeps track of the one night, the TOT?
Everybody who has a transient rental license or a transient rental conditional use permit has to file TOT, and they have to file that in a monthly report, even though there's no, if they don't rent it out, they still have to file the report. They have to just put zero. So the finance department does regulate that. Staff in the budget is, will be implementing, hopefully soon, a program to help automate the regulation and the monitoring of that, and the compliance of that. So we're working on putting in, or developing a contract with a software company that will actually automate even the application process for that.
So I'm just trying to figure out, what is the benefit of that? You don't have any fee on a license. What is, what is the benefit?
Right now, to keep a transient occupancy, or a CUP, or whatever you want to call it today, alive, do you not have to pay a tax once a year on the property?
To keep a transient rental license, there is no minimum number of nights.
At this time, that's what we're.
Nope, at this time. And the previous regulations that relegated, or regulated, rather, the conditional use permit, was replaced with the new ones that regulate the transient rental license. So in a sense, if you have a CUP, there's no minimum number of nights either.
So I guess, you've got to come in and get a city business license every year, obviously, to have your CUP, and you're paying that, and if you're not renting it out, I don't see what the purpose is of telling me I got to rent it for so many nights.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions for staff before we open the hearing?
Yeah, I have one more question. So this is a license, I know we're talking about, but the CUPs that are, that run with the land still, they're still obligated for that one night a year, right?
No, that was repealed in its entirety, and there's no longer a minimum number of nights, because we don't have separate regulations for regulating conditional use permits for transient rentals or license. It's all, it's all under one, it's all under just one transient rental license.
So this will cover all of them?
This covers all of them, that's correct.
As soon as it went to license, that stopped.
That's correct.
That's when it was repealed.
Yes. Sorry if I was not clear on that.
No, that's okay.
Because I always thought there was.
That was my question.
I thought there was prior, and that's why I'm saying.
Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none? Open the public hearing? Anybody wish to testify? Nope.
I have no comment.
Close the public hearing? And I'm assuming nobody sent in any comments?
I have no comments.
I was the one who was really for a minimum stay, but on further consideration, I think that the switch to license as opposed to a CUP takes care of my issues, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, if it's not helpful to staff, and.
It's more of a bother, probably.
Zero, but how about the fees?
They still have to.
For out-of-compliance, the one, two, and three thousand for second and third offense.
Oh, I think, absolutely. I think there should be fees for people that are doing the legal business.
Yeah.
It's the only way to stop it, or further stop it.
Absolutely.
And those were two of the really outstanding parts of the ordinance. So it sounds like one might not make it, and the other will. Someone want to make a?
I'd make a motion to approve the penalties, but not the minimum night stay.
And just keep the minimum night stay at zero?
At zero. I mean, if you buy a city license and you don't use it, you still pay the city for the license, there's no administration other than the license.
So what are the penalties for, like, if there's no minimum night?
Illegally rented.
Illegally rented.
So like somebody on hand.
If we're further with the discussion, let's get a second on it.
Oh, I'll make, I'll second it?
Okay. Continue on.
That's okay.
Yeah, so that was, so the fees are, if someone's found out of compliance, they didn't apply for anything.
Gotcha, okay.
Correct, unlawful transient rental use.
Yeah, and I know we've come across, because I've seen it myself, where people just don't go get a CUP, but they rent it out, and they say, oh, these are my friends, but the people say they're renting it, so I doubt they're your good friends.
Yeah.
But this way, at least there's a mechanism to say, hey, we're going to find you, we catch you doing this, there's actually a penalty for doing.
Kind of hard to prove sometimes, though.
Hard to prove, guaranteed, but.
I would imagine the word would get out pretty fast.
You'd be surprised how many people try to do, I think, that they can just screw the law. So I think a penalty is a great thing, because you got to have some teeth in it if you're saying, please don't do that, when everyone else is operating above board, and then you've got someone just, you know, coming in. I've seen it myself, where people are out at Hamilton, I've said it, and I go, no. And they lie to the association, and they lie to all of us, and it's, you know.
And I would also like to add that, I believe, a couple of days ago, we just received confirmation that there is a property renting out as a vacation rental legally.
Yeah, doesn't have a CUP, doesn't have it, yeah, exactly. So I think putting teeth in it is a good idea.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
And just for clarification, that motion also found the action exempt from SEQUA?
Did it?
It did.
It did? Okay, hand a second. Thank you so much.
Yes.
That was implied, but clarified, so.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll seal.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, motion approved.
Thank you. Sure. Any reports?
I just have one quick announcement. As many of you may or may not know, the sixth cycle RENA is in full swing, and what that means, that's the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It's a mandate from the state. Our current allocation is 27 housing units. We have been working to get a contract, and there's a contract proposal for council's consideration. If awarded, we'll be beginning to look at revising and updating our housing element update for fiscal year '21 through 2029. So it's an eight-year plan, and obviously, the Planning Commission has a big role in that. So we will be reporting and coming back in subsequent meetings with some additional information regarding the housing element update. So just wanted to throw it on council, our Planning Commission's radar, because that will be something that we'll be moving forward with. And then the other quick announcement that I wanted to make is, we just opened up for a planning position, so if there's any future planners out there that are looking to apply, the Planning Department has a couple, or has a spot open, so.
For what?
We're looking to put that in. It's for either an associate, assistant, or senior planner, depending on the qualifications of the individual.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioner business? Business from the audience, which hopefully we have a viewing audience, but not a live audience? Okay, adjourned. Thank you. Good night, Tony.